Good evening. The March 13th, 2019 meeting of the Long Branch City Council will now come to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dangler?
Here.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Here.
Dr. Selly?
Here.
Mrs. Wittes?
Here.
Please all stand for the flag, pledge allegiance. Ready, again. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Can I hereby certify that this meeting has been published in the newspapers in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act and posted as required by law.
Reading and approval of previous minutes, I need a motion to approve the minutes of February 27th, 2019.
Some more. Second.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
This is the first reading of ordinance number 4-19 entitled, "An Ordinance Creating a New Chapter, 148 Heavy Equipment Use of the Municipal Code of the City of Long Branch, and Establishing the Requirement to Obtain a Registration Certificate for the Use of Cranes in the City of Long Branch." I need a motion to introduce on first reading, advertise, and post according to law instead of the public hearing for March 27th, 2019.
Some more. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
I need a motion to open the public portion of the meeting for all comments.
Some more.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
If any one of the audience has any comments to make, please step to the microphone and state your name and address clearly for the record. You have five minutes and may only speak once.
My name is Anita Crayboeing, and I live on 161 Garrett Drive. And I'm just speaking tonight because I would like to congratulate Dr. Anita Vogt for her role she's going to receive an award for the Franko Powell Civic Association. So I congratulate Dr. Vogt. And I also saw Mario in a town meeting that was given the other night in Monmouth County by Franko Powell and Lieutenant President Steve Sweeney. And I would like to congratulate Rose Wittes on forming the volunteer committee. I'm pretty sure it's going to be an active committee. And I saw Mayor Plone at the meeting this first night, so it's going to be wonderful. And I would like to say that we have a wonderful council in Long Branch, and I hope to work closely with them as well as a service of relationship with them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anita.
Mike Castellano, Asbury Park, New Jersey, the current chair for the Surf Rider Foundation Jersey short chapter. I just wanted to express some gratitude. We did introduce possibly passing an ordinance that would ban the intentional release of balloons in Long Branch. And so we wanted to thank you for considering the ordinance and moving forward. We'd ask for any support from the council and then from everybody in the city to get that banned pass. Throughout the past year, we've had about 15 beach cleanups, and we see anywhere from 10 to 20 balloons per cleanup with a minimum of 10, sometimes more than 20. So again, we just ask for your support moving forward, and again, thank you for considering the ordinance.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lisa Bronwell. I'm also from Asbury Park with Surf Rider Foundation. I would like to also reiterate what Mike said to thank the council for addressing this issue with the intentional release, to eliminate the intentional release of balloons because this will help to protect the animals that are harmed when it happens because not only do they get confused and eat the balloons, but it's a slow painful death. And it also can spark fires and a lot of other issues that we don't need in the area. So I wanted to thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Mary Sweeney-Pomfrey. I live at 453 Florence Avenue here in Long Branch. I actually have a concern. I find myself raising another family, and with that responsibility, I get my kids off the school bus. My issue is I live on the corner of Florence and Patton, extremely busy, very dangerous. At least once a week, we have cars that blow past the school buses. It's either one of two things, either distracted, generally on their phones, or they just don't care. I don't know how to address this. My daughter did make a phone call to your office on Monday, and she hasn't heard back from anybody. I know that when we speak to the bus drivers, they say that they turn the videotapes in and that they also report it. It is an issue. Somebody is going to get hurt, and I don't know what to do about it.
So Chief Robuck, can you address that at all? And I apologize, you sent it to me on Monday?
My daughter did call your office on Monday, and I-
Did you speak with Beth?
Yes.
Okay, then I apologize, I haven't received it. I'll definitely follow up on it.
Well, I'd like to thank you for considering it and looking into it.
Absolutely.
Chief, can you comment on-
Can we take a look? It's Florence and Patton, you said every school or before.
Is your last school, we live on the corner of Florence and Patton, and it's an issue with people coming over the bridge 40 miles an hour, people trying to fly off of Patton Avenue to get onto Florence, and just people blowing up Florence.
All right, so about what time, between 3:00, 3:10?
The bus comes between 3:45 and 4 o'clock.
Will you send them over and take a look for it?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Stan Juber from City of Long Branch. I just want to make an announcement to everybody that we are accepting applications for summer help, lifeguards, ticket takers, beach cleaners, parks and recreation cleaners, anybody free. This is mostly, we would like to have some junior high and high school students get involved. I know in the past, you know, we haven't put it out to the public. We've did some advertising and stuff like that, but I just want to let everybody know. Get phone application at Public Works or Mr. Jennings' office at Recreation, and we're going to start doing interviews in April. Thank you.
Tom, Stan, can we also make an announcement at the senior center in case there's someone there that might like to spend some time collecting tickets?
Sure, absolutely. We'll get it out. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Found it interesting at the last council meeting with City Attorney Ray Nolan's position on the introduced ordinances, and his statements that it goes back at least two years to the prior administration, and not completing it could have major consequences. That's a false statement. Resolution 29617, December 11th, 2017, entitled, "Resolution Authorizing the Mayor of the City of Long Branch to Execute a Redevelopment Agreement Between the City of Long Branch and Long Branch Partners LLC." Fully approved by the Schneider team, voting yes, Plone, Selly, Soriani, Billings, and Bastelli. In this resolution, it reads as follows, quote, "Whereas the redeveloper was conditionally designated," and I say conditionally with emphasis, "designated as the redeveloper of the property December 27th, 2016, which conditional designation has been extended and continued while the partners have been engaged in a collaborative design process and negotiation of the team's rights and obligations with respect to the proposed project for the property as set forth in the agreement," that property being Broadway. Keep the boards in mind, conditional designation. Also in Resolution 29617, the redevelopment agreement appears to following, Article 13.1, entitled Restrictions and Transfers. Prior to the issuance of a certificate of completion for the Broadway project or any part thereof," and I put Broadway in there to let you know what we're talking about, pursuant to NJSA 4812A9C, "except as otherwise permitted by this agreement, including any conveyance to a qualified entity pursuant to Section 2.6, redeveloper shall be without the power to sell, lease, or otherwise transfer the project or any such part of without the written consent of the city." Remember that. No obligation is here on the part of Team Plone concerning the 30-year tax abatement for Broadway. Again, Article 13.1, 29617, "Redevelopers shall be without the power to sell, lease, or otherwise transfer the property without the consent of the city." What the Plone team did at the last council meeting with the introduction of ordinances concerning Broadway was to create a new financial agreement by Team Plone through Long Branch Partners to Kushner Companies via Section 9.02 of the introduced ordinances stating the following, "The city entity hereby expressly acknowledges and understands and agrees that upon conveyance whether by sale, grant, award, gift, transfer, or otherwise of any partial or portion of land, including any improvements related thereto," and then it goes into verbiage about tax sale, wins, and bankruptcies, "the sale shall be subject to and governed by the terms of this financial agreement." Again, "The city and the entity hereby expressly acknowledges and understands and agrees to the terms of this financial agreement." That financial agreement is a new financial agreement, and that's Team Plone's financial agreement, independent of 29617. Thank you, clerk. Thank you, clerk. You fashioned a remedy, Team Plone, to allow Kushner to either be assigned or assumed the Broadway agreement without ever mentioning Kushner's name. You buttered Kushner's bread. This was to save your face in a campaign where you campaigned against Kushner and tax abatements. The problem is this, in addition to your lies and your deceit, on February 22nd, Kushner paid $1.1 billion for 6,000 rental apartments in Maryland and Virginia. You combined a $1.1 billion purchase with the federal tax incentives on Broadway for a federal tax zone, the federal opportunity zone. Then the question becomes from the people of Long Branch to Team Plone, why are you giving a 30-year municipal tax abatement to Kushner? Junk government.
Is there anyone else?
Good evening, Avery Grant, 405 Atlantic Avenue. I'm very concerned with Mr. Lepore, what he said, and I've talked to you about that. I think that when you've changed partners, that opens up for renegotiation. And once you found out it's Kushner, there should be no question that he should not get a tax abatement. He's gotten so much, and I've mentioned to you before in East Orange when I was their city engineer, the first developer got everything he wanted, and I kidded with him, I said, I'll throw my wife in too. But after that, they pay the full price. And we need the money because right now, I've been retired since '93, and my taxes are almost $7,000. I'm on fixed income. The school needs a pool. We came to you also on the fifth day, and they said they didn't have money. So I think we need to reopen that negotiation. I'm disappointed, really, I'm disillusioned. I thought we'd be a different council, but I don't see it happening. Also with the Father's Day, I'm only mentioning things because people have come to me. They're concerned, finally, you approved it, but you said you have no money for a ban. And that's something we need in this, we need more activity in this city. You've taken away the boardwalk. They came to me, I said, I have some corporate sponsors, but right now they're sponsoring my Easter dinner and some other things. But if I had to, I'll try to do it, but I think it's a city thing. The next thing is Code Blue. I've mentioned to you, I think you need to put a coordinator from the city to coordinate these things. They called me, Bev Cruz and Lisa Wilson are doing an excellent job, but you need somebody over that from the city because we need to take care of our homeless. I'm very fortunate, I've gotten through Freehold or Curly, we've gotten a homeless shelter being built at Fort Monmouth. I'm not happy with the size of it. I tried to get them to use existing barracks, but they wouldn't do that. But we need you to be more involved, and I thought that's what you would do. We need more activities in the school, I mean, in the city for youth. And I can go back to things when we had Mayor Hune, and Samuels came to him and said, look, I and Avery and Lester Chapman, don't knock that down, we'll rebuild it, renovate it, and we'll make it a community center. Mayor Hune said, we'll buy anything he wants. It became a very active center for the community, because they did a good job. Then Mayor Choffey came and said, Avery, would you run a month-long fundraiser for four EMT veterans? And he assigned Jack Calley, and we ran a program. The city got involved. Then along came Charlie Kacor. I'm just mentioning things that I know about, you can't tell me that they didn't happen. He says, so Charlie Kacor, myself, and Ed Sanmario, we said, Sharon Waite, she needs to go to Boston for juvenile diabetes treatment. We said, all right, we'll do a radio talk. We did it from Friday night to Sunday afternoon. The city provided traffic control for us. We operated out of touch cafe. But again, the city was involved, but I don't see the city getting involved in the community like they should be, and I'm very disappointed with that. I could keep going on. For all the other administrations, we've been able to come and say, can you do this? And they stepped to the plate. And sometimes you say, well, look at the regulations. Well, the regulations, you mentioned the summer program. In East Orange, I'd get 100 students on the summer youth employment program, and they worked during the summer, and they would be available to do anything they wanted to. There are programs that work with our children that you need to get involved with. So don't say that you're handicapped. You're not handicapped. The people are here, they put faith in you. I thought we'd see something different, but I'm getting very disappointed. I could keep going on, but that's enough. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Patty Veracek, 246 Jerome Avenue, Oakhurst. I'd like to say that, first of all, I agree wholeheartedly with what Avery said and convinced with the tax abatements for Kushner. I've mentioned it at the other council meetings, that if it was not possible to change some of the existing contracts that were in place with the Long Branch Partners, number one, I don't think that it should have been used in your campaigning, for one. And secondly, I don't see why there can't be some changes made where possibly they could let the city, the citizens use the pools at one or both of the hotels in the offseason, at least for the youth or the seniors. Or possibly do something with the recreation department, something with the Code Blue Center, just something to give back to the city because they're certainly getting, I think, a very good deal, and it just doesn't look right. I'd also like to say that, I don't know if you're at liberty to say anything, but there was that police chase, and there was the officers, I think there was three that were hurt, although they were, you know, minor injuries. There was never any follow-up as to their condition, what was the outcome of the chase, and, you know, I just think the people deserve to have some info on that, as well as, you know, in general, whenever there's an incident, there's many times where we're told there's an investigation, and then that's it, it just drops off the planet Earth. So it would be nice to keep in communication even as follow-up, or just to say that-
It still can't be commented on, and that's pretty much it. Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes.
Madam Clerk, I brought my own time clock. Sorry. Ernest McNolley, born in Long Branch, currently live in Asbury Park. I'm sorry for the voice, it's the result of a violent crime injury, and the doctors tell me I could lose my voice completely. I can't imagine myself without a voice. What I'm left with is my person, and I don't think I'm going too far with that, so I pray that I don't lose my voice completely. There's a lot of things that Mr. Grant and Mr. Lepore said that I wholeheartedly agree with. Another thing that through some research I became aware of, I still think the city should be able to go back and look at all the things that the Aaron, Ansel Grim Aaron Law Firm and the Schneider's Long Branch did over almost 30 years of all these deals. I mean, there were deals upon deals, upon deals upon deals, and I'm not sure, but I think from Park Avenue and the railroad tracks in Elbrun, all the way to the Taconacy Lake is where the current Kushner developments are taking place. I guess Senior, after he got out of prison, built the mansion, and now I think the son's building all that compound by the Taconacy Lake. From what I heard, they bought that as a farm in a tax, a tax sale for $25,000 for 28 acres. That's not a bad price. I think Lower Broadway, if you extrapolate forward, may have also been a steal. I heard the city attorney or the mayor mention something, we have to go forward because a deal's a deal, and it would cost us, I don't know what number they mentioned, 15 million or a million and a half. I think if you offered the residents of Long Branch to bond, and I would even chip in from Asbury to take that back and really make it for the people of Long Branch. I mean, come on, everything that's being built here is being built for billionaires and millionaires in Asbury. And I always mention Asbury and Long Branch because they're the only two cities in Monmouth County. Long Branch is twice the size, Asbury has twice the problems, but Long Branch has a lot of problems too, especially with crime and, I don't want to, can I say the word corruption? I don't think I should say that, but, and these things are lingering. So this mayor and council ran under a family-first, one government for all people in all areas, the Long Branch, and a clean sweep out of Adam Schneider's Long Branch. And I don't think we saw those things and go and up-slate to the governor and the senator and assembly people. They talked a lot about family first, about quality of life, about the precious nature of life, and now we're in office, and it's back to catering to the elite, special interests. It's gone on since I'm a kid. I thought it would eventually stop, but we just go through generations. I think the greatest thing that this new administration did, maybe the, I don't want to say the only, but I think the only, was to fire the Ansel Grim Law Firm with James Aaron, who I believe did more damage in this city. And I don't agree with the city attorney, the new one, and the mayor, that you shouldn't go back and make them, make reparation for probably the billions that they took from this city. You know, it's not fair that they wind up in Florida buying islands and stuff and laughing at us up here with our money. I think lawsuits are out of control, and I think the police department is out of control, and we get no cooperation. Mine says five minutes. Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else? Okay. I need a motion to close the public participation portion of this meeting.
Some more. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We can take the listed resolutions as a consent agenda. May the motion?
Some more.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dangler?
Here.
Mr. Viera?
Here.
Dr. Vogt?
Here.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
I need a motion to approve the listed application.
Some more. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
At this time, Councilman Dangler, do you have anything that you would like to say this evening?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
A little more than two weeks ago, we obviously had a unfortunate accident with a police officer trying to do their job, and I did certainly wish the officer who was hurt and had to go to rehab a healthy recovery, and the other officer who was injured not as bad, I certainly wished the same for him. On the other hand, two weeks ago tomorrow, I sent a request via email asking some questions in regards to that particular incident, and 14 days later, I still do not have an answer on any of the questions that I asked. I know some things, if they're criminal, I'm not allowed to ask these questions or not allowed to get those answers, but all of the questions that I asked were not prohibited from that, so that is not acceptable. And I would like an answer to, actually, I asked a question for all the mayor and council to get the, I sent them the questions so they would know what they are, and also so everyone would get the same answer that I may or may not get. So again, 14 days is a long time not to get a response other than it's at the prosecutor's office. So I'm going to wait another couple of days, and then I'm going to think about going public and ask the questions publicly so I can get the answers, because as a councilman and certainly also as a member, not just a member, but 18-year president of the Greater Long Branch NAACP, these are questions that I should be able to ask, and I've been doing this a while. So any question that I may have, I can- So, any question that I may have, I could make a phone call, but since I'm a council person, I think that I have a different responsibility, and would just go ahead and put it in writing and ask those questions. And again, fourteen days is long enough not to get an answer. Thank you very much, and everyone have a safe and blessed two weeks till I see you again. Now, I don't need applause, sir. Thank you.
Councilman Viera?
Yes, good evening. Thanks for coming. I want you to take up stand, and I have all the, as many people, applications for the summer help, seasonal help here, because we would like to hire Long Branch people. I also want you to know that I've been working with the developers of Down Ocean Boulevard. They've hired somebody, and they are open, so if you have anybody that needs a job, I would like to get into these construction sites, get ahold of me, and I'll give, I'll transfer the number to them, and I'll make sure they get ahold of you. And that's about it, and good night, and thanks for coming again.
Thank you. Councilwoman Vogt?
So, it's kind of disappointing to hear that many of you expressed disappointment in us, and makes me think of some of the things that, you know, we had our hundred-day plan, and at one point, we had talked about taking the time to give you an update on maybe even just one project a night, or one project a meeting, something like that, and maybe we should start doing that, so that more of the work that we're doing, you know about, because it's a lot, obviously, there's a lot of work being done that we haven't talked about yet. So, one of the things that I did want to, I want to mention tonight, and I guess I'm gonna put this, Avery, in the context of your comments in particular, because what I wanted to do is to just remind everybody, I've mentioned this before, and it's, many of you should have, there are invitations, it's an open event, and I'm gonna put these back on the table for you to take, that on March 25th, the mayor will be officially launching his task force on the opioid addiction. So, I guess your comments really hit home, because it was, the administration is not getting involved, and we've been working our hearts out on this one. So, please, and really, maybe it is the idea that we do need to share more information, so that, you know, we all know what's going on. But let me put these on the back, back table, please, open event, come and join us, we have a core of such dedicated, wonderful people who are really trying to make a difference with this, and we are convinced that we're gonna succeed, so please join us.
Thank you. Councilwoman Sully?
I have three things I'd like to talk about tonight. First of all, I would like to remind everybody, but I don't have to, I don't think in this audience, but next Tuesday is the beginning of the Citizens Police Academy again. It's a great place for everybody to learn about the city, what goes on, and you come out of it with not only camaraderie of friends, but you get a better knowledge of what goes on in a city. My next item is I would like to wish, belatedly, but our happy birthday to our council president.
Thank you.
Last Saturday.
Thank you.
And my second, my third one, is come Sunday is my holiday, and if you didn't notice, I don't have blue on, I have green on, and everybody knows that green is for St. Patrick's Day, so I wish everybody a happy St. Patrick's Day.
Thank you. Mayor Plon?
Yeah, you know, I wanted to, I want to just comment on some of the things that were said this evening. First off, I want to say, I'm sorry I don't remember your name. I am disappointed, I do apologize. I know you called on Monday, it's Wednesday, it's not a long time, but I normally try to respond sooner than that, so, I don't know what happened, but I'll certainly get, you know, get back to you. But I want to, you know, it's a little frustrating, it's very easy to come to the microphone and to read some document and just say that that's, that's what it is. Let me tell you this, I'm speaking for myself, my singular focus of running for mayor and being the mayor is to serve the residents of Long Branch. And I must tell you that I'm very honored that every single one of these council people I know feel the same way, and we're all trying our best and doing it, and every single one of them is involved in something that's interesting to you, interested to them, and interested to the community. Mr. Raynon, I think, clearly set up what the situation was last two weeks ago with the downtown project. This is a multi-stage process. There was a financial agreement, there were contracts that were drawn up and made, and it's very easy, and I've said this to Mr. Grant at a meeting, it's very easy to come in and say, rip it up, no abatement. If it were that easy, we would consider doing that, but we have met, as he indicated, every week for months discussing this, and for somebody to come up and just read a conditional redevelopment agreement, which, by the way, there were a couple of them, and just kind of pick the one that you want to talk about, is really not fair. So, let me just back up again, because I know Mr. Raynon already said this. We now have a million dollars in our account that was owed to us as a result of introducing that financial agreement, which we were obligated to do. He also mentioned last week that we received one point two million dollars on the, on the signing of that agreement a year and a half ago. If we were to rip it up and say, no abatement, let's look at what would happen. First off, they would probably rightfully, we would rightfully probably owe them two point two million dollars, and probably have to give that back, because Mr. Lepore is claiming that, I don't, quite frankly, I wasn't sure what he was claiming, but what I can tell you, and can you confirm that, that they, we would probably have to give two point two million dollars back, okay? In addition to that, we would then go right into litigation, which, by the way, Long Branch Partners, as you may have known, had done that in the past. They sued the city for seventy-five dollars, seventy-five million dollars, claiming, I don't remember what it was, but it was something to the effect of that we weren't acting fast enough, which was just ridiculous. And I don't want to say anything about them, because they are still who we were dealing with, right? You're talking about being under contract to Kushner, that's what we hear, that's what we're told, but Long Branch Partners own this. This agreement is with Long Branch Partners, it is not with Kushner. So, the other thing to consider too, is that, you know, you talk about the campaign, I've been very upfront with the few abatements that I have agreed to, and I was very clear, if anybody asked, these were the public statements that I made when I, when I agreed to those abatements. In the, in the, in the, and I'm sorry I'm taking so much time, but I think it's important. We spoke about no tax abatements for oceanfront development, we talked about moving forward that we were gonna renegotiate these deals. Even with this current agreement, we renegotiated the deal. And what did we do? So, that RAB was five million dollars, moving closer to six million dollars. We negotiated to four eight fifty. Well, okay, maybe that's not a lot, but it's something. It's potentially almost a million and a half dollars, okay? That's number one. We accelerated the pace, so that whoever buys this, or whoever builds it, now has to move quicker on the project, which means that if it does get built, we would get the revenue back sooner. Also, as I mentioned last week, and Mr. Raynon as well, there's an affordable housing component that a lot of you talk about, and that would kick in a lot faster than the old agreement. So, again, we basically did exactly what we said, in that we renegotiated what we could renegotiate with. But, again, we talked about, I had this conversation with Mr. Grant about the parking, well, it's okay as a parking lot. Well, first off, it's not okay as a parking lot, because if we ever went into litigation with Long Branch Partners, I'm sure they'd immediately shut it down. Why would they allow us to park there? And quite frankly, ladies and gentlemen, even more in the campaign, we talked about Lower Broadway and a city beyond Ocean Avenue, right? In other words, we talked about wanting the delay in getting anything done on Long Branch, on Lower Broadway. We want to get it done. So, I mean, it's very important for us that something's built there. We don't want an empty parking lot where what was once our downtown business district. So, it's important that we get that done, but this is here and there with the financial agreement, because that is the bottom line. What the attorneys made clear to us, that if you ripped up that contract, everything that I already described to you would take place immediately, and we have a past, you know, past history with that group, we don't want to do that, okay? So, that's that. Some of the other comments that were made, though, about disappointing about our efforts, whether it's recreation or something, you know, as Councilwoman Vogt pointed out, let me just, let me just list a few things. We, on March 25th, she indicated, we have a Long Branch opioid task force, we've been meeting for months to be aggressively, as a municipality, to address this issue that many are ignoring, and we're facing it head-on. Am I right? I mean, is it, you know, that's what we're doing. Recreation, we have been in active conversations with the Housing Authority, with the Board of Education, to bring a Boys and Girls Club of Monmouth County to Long Branch. It's a very successful program in Asbury Park, and it's a very successful program in Red Bank, and we are trying our hardest to get it here somewhere in Long Branch. To say that there's nothing for the kids, or we're not, you know, making an effort is just unfair. This summer, we are going to have a really quite unique to the city, to the shore, is we're gonna have a permanent facility on the beach for people with disability to have access to the beach, a permanent structure with shading and picnic tables, and are coordinating efforts to get people who can come to the beach in a wheelchair, who want to go in the water and come back. This is, this is a brand-new concept, that we're working together with several groups with motions, Stan Zubin putting in incredible effort, we have a donation, I mean, so, we have a diversity group that has a lot of things planned for the summer called Community, they made a presentation. Affordable housing, we have met with the Housing Authority on several occasions to see what we can do to bring affordable housing to the city, more affordable housing to the city of Long Branch. We have a lot of ideas, and we, yesterday, we had a meeting with ten people, including the Housing Authority and staff people, and someone from the outside who specializes in affordable housing, and taking advantage of opportunity zones that we've been designated to have that. You know, I feel funny that I'm just like going through this list. Code, Code Blue, Mr. Grant, you know, we've had this conversation where the county is responsible for the social services. We realize that perhaps it's inadequate. We know that it's something we want to look into, but the bottom line is we've established a warming center here in Long Branch for that, for every single day now that it reaches Code Blue level. And, I mean, you yourself, you've been a part of that. There are several people in this room who we sometimes agree with, sometimes disagree with, but we work together. It's unfair for others to come to the podium, sort of distort the facts with some papers and something that I can't even make sense of, and then we just say, okay, yeah, that's easy, we're doing nothing, we'll rip it up, whatever. And I'm sort of, I'm sort of going on here, and I apologize, but I really want to say that our interest, my interest, our interest is really in the welfare of the city. We are, you know, Mr. Jennings is here. In the past several years, you talk about the kids, we've had a holiday party where for the last several years, there's been a hundred and twenty gifts who've been given out to kids. This year, we promoted that event, what was it, Mr. Jennings, three hundred and fifty kids showed up? We were worried about, you know, not having enough gifts to give out. I'm meeting with Mr. Jennings tomorrow and his staff. What can we do? What new ideas can we bring to the city with recreation and things for the kids? So, Mr. Grant, I think maybe to some extent, Anita is right, that maybe we have to get that out a little more, but I don't think we should be apologetic for it, because we are all trying so hard. If I may, am I wrong on anything? Am I right? Do you, do you agree?
Absolutely right.
Miss, President Wittes, she's formed a volunteer group to try to have an umbrella organization where volunteers can get together, and we can direct them in the right place. We're with Dr. Sully, we're talking about some new senior programs we can, we've had the county come in with some recreation opportunities, with senior programs, with Councilman Viera, he literally goes to the construction sites and sees if we can get higher local people for jobs. Mr. Dangler, constantly, what can we do to help the minority community, minority businesses, help the residents of the city? And Anita, with the disability group, with the opioid task force, every single day, we're trying to do something to help. So, again, Mr. Grant, I guess I do apologize if you feel that, I feel, I think we all feel bad that anybody in the room might be disappointed, and we're just really trying hard. And I must tell you, what I appreciate, what I really love is the fact that a lot of time, wow, how long have I been talking? What I really appreciate, and I love, and there's several people in the room here, Mr. Grant for one, Patty for another, you know, we disagree on things, but we get together, and when we can move forward and get something done, I think for all of us, that means a lot, and we want to just continue to do that. And Mr. Lepore is not here, but I've mentioned it several times, that I've reached out to him, and I'll do it again, to meet with him, to discuss with him, any issues and anyone else in this room that they may have, and every single one of us will do the same.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd just like to thank everyone for coming out this evening, and thank you, Sweeney, for your concerns about Patton Avenue and Florence Avenue. I live close by, so I understand exactly what you're talking about, and we will look into it, absolutely. Thank you. I'd like to wish everyone a good evening, and thank you, and we'll see you in two weeks. I need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.